Dyton Conservation Commission opens its meeting for Thursday, October 17, 2024. The public meeting will be in video, audio recorded, of cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dytton-mass.gov and YouTube. Would everyone stand please for a bunch of agents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is a continued hearing from Ahmed Hofstetter of Grasshopper Energy. It had been tabled to a date uncertain. Lisa, you have heard from them, is that...
Not on this matter, though.
Not on this matter, okay. So when that comes up, that will supersede this one here. Okay, we will, since it's been continued to a date uncertain, we'll go to the next item. Review, discuss, and act upon an abbreviated notice of area resource delineation from David Butler, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at 833 Williams Street, map 8, lot 20, DEP file number 17-499.
Okay, we're currently waiting for them to respond to the Weston and Sampson peer review letter. We did have a call, phone conference, and the applicant may be considering withdrawing the ANRAD because their perk failed on the new lot. So we are, we got a continuance from them till November 21st.
Is there a motion to continue?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the 21st, you said.
November, yep.
November, correct. Okay, we have a new hearing, a notice of intent. Peter Koffer, 737 Tremont Street, map 9, lot 41, to construct septic system repair with associated site grading and disturbance within the 100-foot buffer zone of wetland resources. SFG requests a continuance to this date. The file number is 17-510. And, okay.
I'll give you guys, you guys want some...
Okay, we get one here, we can share it, okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, here's Tremont here, okay. Here's Tremont, here's the flag line. Okay, so the driveway's coming in through here, and so here's the, um, what is it? The yellow line is installed, okay? Begin. So this here is what, the 50? I can't, let's see. Oh, that's the 100. 100, so they're outside of the 100. Oh, no, they're a little bit in 100, but that's, that's, that's repair. Okay. So for the most part, your system is outside...
It's already pre-existing, correct?
For the most part, it's outside the 100, only that one corner and some grading.
Correct. Well, no.
No, for the most part, it's outside of 50.
Outside of 50.
Outside of the 50, okay. I'm looking at the, the pink as being the, okay, outside of the 50, okay.
Yeah, one's a 25 and one's 100 on that one.
Okay.
There is a 50 in there, but I didn't, I didn't color it pink.
Lisa, would this be just under the local bylaw if this were a repair of an existing system?
So this is every, yeah, this is a repair of an existing system and just under the local bylaw at this point.
Okay, that's it, all right.
Okay. So this would be the most conducive to the, to the site plan?
Yep.
Okay.
They actually were going to put the system in the front yard, and if you want to present that.
Yeah, Brad Fitzgerald from SFG Engineering, 28 Main Street in Lakeville. So originally, we had proposed a system in the front yard, which is only going to be about 16 or 17 feet from that isolated vegetated wetland in the front right corner of the lot. So we went back, did a new perk in the back of the house, and came up with better material, same type of water table, very high water table. But by rerouting the plumbing to come out the rear of the house, we're able to actually keep the system as a gravity-fed system and not have a pump. And also, we're able to keep more than 50 feet from the edge of the wetland in the back. It's a, it's a bordering vegetated wetland. So we, we've got the system 50 feet from that. You'll have some grading that'll get to about, I think, I think it's 38 feet from the edge of the BBW.
So this, this will work out much better, both environmentally and for the, your client as well than with gravity...
Yeah, and you won't have the, the, the system we designed in front had, you know, alternative technology, which meant it had a motor, a blower going all the time, and it had, you know, it needed electricity work. This thing is pure gravity, no electricity, no pump, nothing. So it's, you're right, it works out best for everyone.
Any other questions from members? Do we have a motion then?
Um, yeah, Celia, the only other concern I had was, so we do have the placards in the backyard, but I think it would be good to just put a couple in the front yard around the IVW.
That was to you, I think.
And do you guys want to reclaim your 25 foot where you could? That's my only question.
Well, it, it doesn't hurt to put up the placards.
Where do you want it, though? Do you want it on the edge of the IVW, or do you want to try to reclaim the 25 foot?
Um, 25 is probably best because other than that, they'll work beyond it.
Yeah, so you guys are going to abandon the old system. Once you do that, I guess it sounds like we want to try to put a, maybe three placards around that.
Now, you, you're talking about the one at road's edge?
No.
Okay, so, but you're talking here to have, to have those placards here?
Yep.
And, and to have them...
Do we want them here, too? That's a question for you guys, because he already has them right here, and then right here. So do you think you need them over here, too? I mean, I think that's good enough there, but I think if they, you know...
Yeah, well, you could write that in to add additional placards for protecting what's there.
The 25 or right on the edge of the wooded area?
25, since, since they kind of use the 25. The 25 is to remain natural.
Well, right now, it's lawn, right?
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah, it's lawn.
Okay, all right.
You have the right to maintain that, though.
Yeah, okay, there, it's lawn, then it's got to go to the edge.
Should be on the edge.
Yeah, I think it should go on the edge of the wetland.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, no, because what's there, they, they can continue.
There's also a pipe that goes underneath, see that line there, goes under the driveway? Do you think that pipe's going to be sufficient, because it seemed like maybe it might have had some overflow at one point?
Well, I, I mean, it's been there for as long as the driveway's been there. That's, I don't know about overflow or anything.
Yeah, because it looks like, to me, it looks like this area in here and the wetland change map that DEP noted, did you see the wetland change note that they...
I, I did see that note, yes.
Yeah, so what they said was, is wetland change in here that was not permitted. So this house wasn't previously permitted with conservation, correct?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Not that I know of.
So DEP caught this from about 20, 20-some-odd years ago, that this, well, this area, this lot and this lot seem to appear to have some...
Reduced wetlands.
Change.
I would think if the house isn't much more than 20 years old, then it would have had to at least get in order conditions...
Yeah.
Back then, but they probably just said, cross it and go.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in this case, I mean, I just, I'm a little concerned about this, because the area between the asphalt and the IVW, to me, is pretty wet. So this whole...
I think it almost acts like a sedimentation basin almost before it gets into the pipe, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to come, flow from, from east to west, do you think?
I think it's more of an equalizer, if anything.
Okay.
Because there's a second pipe, too. So you've got the one under the driveway...
Yep.
And then to the west of that, you've got one that's going into the IVW.
Okay.
So I think it doesn't really show on the topo, but it's kind of tiered there. And I think it comes out of that pipe from the driveway, settles, and then if it gets high enough, it, it floats down to that other pipe and gets into the IVW.
Yeah, the owner didn't make a reference that when he would try to mow in here, you know, a lot of times it would just, it wouldn't be...
Good time to do it.
Yeah. So I just didn't know if, if we wanted to try to kind of leave part of this to grow in here, this small area, because of the pipes?
On the side, right next to the driveway?
I mean, as far as I can tell, it's been like that since it was built.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's been...
Yeah, it was built without a permit.
A lot of stuff that used to go on around town, but it's, um, no, I mean, you know, like you say, the driveway's right there. I don't know how far off the edge it'd be.
Yeah, they kind of need a line of sight, is that what you're thinking, for pulling in and out of the driveway, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, you know, like I say, just by guessing, they had a conservation sign to the edge of the driveway. What's that, probably about 10 feet, 12 feet?
Uh, no, probably right there.
Yeah.
Five to seven feet.
Yeah, no, it's pretty close, you know? That's pretty much a rectangle, a lot that's got a lot of trees. I mean, maybe out front, if you want some of that, maybe with a sign in the low spot, but even that's all grown in, too, so...
Yeah.
You know, if they went around the edge of that with conservation signs, you know, because it is lawn, and, you know, they may, they have been maintain, maintaining the people that are there, so...
Right.
It's, uh...
Personally, I, I think it's best just to leave it alone...
Yeah.
So they can maintain it, because of, of you a lot of growing.
Yeah, you, you, you block it off too much, and they just want to make backups, and it'll be a mess, you know?
I, I agree with Bill. The other thing to consider, too, is that we're in the process of proposing a bylaw amendment, so really, this time next month is a very good chance that this activity would have been exempt from the local bylaw anyway. So, to me, given the...
Well, I mean, the septic system, you mean, or do you...
Yeah, I mean, the replacement of the septic system, the enlargement.
So, well, uh, right, well, is this an enlargement?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just a replacement, correct?
Correct.
100% no.
Because if, if you enlarge it, you can't get the variances, so...
It's just in a new location, so I don't know, would it be, you know, that's something that we have to kind of figure out internally, like, you know, the septic's going from the front yard to the backyard, so it's not really like a replacement in kind.
Yeah, so actually...
It's an improvement.
I mean, if it goes to the backyard, the route, the route of the wetlands is a lot more than they are, I mean, they're in the wetlands a lot more in the front than they are in the back.
Yeah, it's an improvement. It's an improvement by moving into the backyard.
Yeah, it's definitely an improvement.
Yeah, yeah.
And I do, I do appreciate that, and I think that they were able to, uh, figure that out.
Okay, but now we are dealing right here, if this is not going to be touched, we just let that alone?
No, it's, it, what we're saying is, we're going to just require the placards along the edge.
Yeah, I, I think that, just, just leave it at that.
Of the wooded area, the vegetated, vegetated wetland, even though there's some emergent stuff coming up in here, we're going to let that go, because this is previously cut, lawned area, you know?
You know, if they want to let it grow back on their own, it's fine.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of created itself as its own little ecosystem, where it, it stabilizes the flow, settles it, and then lets it float over.
Yeah, before it enters, yeah.
Okay, so let's just say that they'll put some here, you're right there, then they'll, they'll put some placards here.
Well, I think you'll modify the plan to just add a couple of pla, three pla.
Just tell me where, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think on the eastern edge, and then on the corner, and then on the southern, like, every normal width scale of this.
So, like...
Yeah, right, right up here.
About like flags four and eight, something like that?
Uh, yeah, four, yeah, four and eight would be good. Just two, yeah. I mean, I'm happy with that.
Okay, we're all set, then?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, so like, next month, if you can't come to us for something like this, or after town meeting and our bylaw passes, then it would be more like an RDA, because we know it's a jurisdictional area, but we wouldn't make you file an NOI.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
That's better.
Okay. Any comments from the...
Try to screen them.
Any input from the audience? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the project?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Brad.
Is that issue in order conditions?
Yeah, so just tell me the date of the, what the day, new date of the plan is going to be, and forward it over.
Yeah, I'll put tomorrow's date on it.
Okay.
Okay, next we have a request for determination of applicability for the Massachusetts Electric Company for the 74L2 pole replacement project involving replacement of 11 utility poles, maintenance on one pole on Trerry Moore along the Regional Road and Horton Street right away.
Good evening.
Hello.
Have a good night. How we doing?
Hi. Um, my name is Molly Lennon. I'm with TRC here representing Massachusetts Electric Company tonight. So I'm here to talk about the 74L2 pole replacement project. This work involves replacing 11 poles along Regional Road and Horton Street in Dyton. However, only four of those poles are within jurisdictional areas. So, yeah, they'll be replacing these existing poles, as well as conducting various maintenance on the poles and the overhead lines. And this also includes trimming and possibly removing several trees along the lines there. So these poles are in poor condition, so they, they'll need to be replaced pretty soon. And then also, up to nine trees may need to be removed, but more likely, they'll just need to be trimmed in conjunction with the pole removal. These are just trees that are in very close proximity to the overhead lines, so it causes a, a safety hazard. So the, the four poles that we're focusing on, these are within the 100-foot buffer zone of forested, bordering vegetated wetlands. And so the, the replacement poles for these four poles is the same square footage as the existing poles, it's a in-kind replacement. So for the work itself, each of these four poles will be dug up and removed, and then the new pole will be installed in the same location, and then backfilled with the, the same soil. So each pole will create a two-square-foot temporary impact, so eight, eight square feet total of a temporary impact within the, the buffer zone. During construction, we will be following National Grid's best management practices, so this includes using erosion controls between the work area and the wetlands, either straw waddles or silt sock in this case. And then after construction is done, any altered areas will be stabilized with straw and seeded with a native seed mix if needed to let the vegetation grow back. All of this work is exempt under the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act for the utility maintenance exemption, but Dyton currently doesn't have that exemption. So we're hoping we can get a negative determination of applicability for this work, since there's a very small temporary impact, and there's no, like, new fill proposed or any grading changes at the site, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Any member questions? Anyone in the audience have questions?
I just have one thing to point out to you guys. So we've got some really good aerials that they put together, and I wanted to point out how the Mass DEP 2005 wetlands differ so much than what is actually flagged in the field, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to, like, if you guys, for an example...
Teachable moment here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, for example, Mass DEP only has these areas, and underneath, you know, you can see the green underneath, but the wetlands actually come out.
They expanded?
Yeah, I mean, it's difficult, right? So that, you know, you can't always go by, um, as much as this one, but you can't always just go by the Mass DEP wetlands, that is all.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, we took a, we did a site visit, and minor exemptic, did we, the poles need to be replaced, they're old and they're wooden and rotting and...
Lots of little holes in them.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we want to entertain a negative determination.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Now, the, the new poles that are going to be put in, is that a real, real tall pole?
Um, they're a few feet taller than what's there. They're going to be, I believe, 40-foot poles.
Yeah, the ones I've seen are like 10 or 15 feet. What's the purpose for a higher pole?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, myself.
The poles that are put in, are they, they're not treated with Creosol anymore, but what are they treated with?
Good question, yeah.
I do not know that one.
Can you try to find out, an email asks?
Yeah.
Just because, that's a, that's a question.
I mean, if they're original poles, they get Creosol on them. They've only changed over in what, probably the last 12 years, 14 years?
Yeah, but to what?
I don't know what they call it, but they got some other, um, you know what I mean, coating for it.
New chemical.
But actually, Creosol's better, because Creosol doesn't mitigate. It only goes out about five or six inches and stays there.
Right.
No, I mean, it's, you know, it's a proven fact, but they made them change it, so, um, I don't know what they're doing with the new ones, but...
They replace them more often, then.
Yeah, they do, Jim.
John, you could die in a say something.
Yeah, is that north of, north of Horton Street?
Uh, it's on the...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the north, or the...
It's between the high school and towards where...
Yeah, Regional Road and Horton Street, so two are on...
Yeah, right by the...
You're, you're on the south side.
Yeah, it's opposite from you.
But it's the same power lines that go by your house.
Right. The other thing we're talking about, replacing the line on the opposite side, I was just curious if that was directly related to Wellington.
I think there were some poles that head towards Wellington, correct?
Yeah.
They're just not in our jurisdiction, so that's why...
Oh, okay, maybe that's what...
Yeah, you can, you can feel free to look at that, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
If there's no, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm willing to entertain a negative determination.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, yeah, so it would be a negative three, I think?
Okay.
You got to get specific with our negative motions. Usually a negative three. So a negative three would be, the work described in the request is within the buffer zone as defined in the regulations, but will not alter an area under protect, under...
But it's also public utilities.
Yeah. So prior to ground disturbing activities, erosion controls will be installed, blah, blah, blah. And, and then negative five as well, because it meets the exemptions. Right? Negative three and five, so that's, that's what we'll be.
Okay. Do you want me to rephrase the motion?
Oh, sorry, yes.
No, no problem, thank you. I'd like to propose a motion for a negative determination of applicability under exemptions three and five.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, however that differs. Okay, Lisa, we have a request for a certificated compliance from BWC Greenbrook LLC at 903 Tremont Street and 624 Middle Street, file number 17-432. You have been to the site and...
Oh, yeah. But Nancy and I walked it in August, I think it was 95, 96 degrees that day. But Weston and Sampson's reviewing this for us as well, yeah?
Okay.
Good evening, Retriccio from Field Engineering, on behalf of the, the applicant. We had received, Weston and Sampson had done a site, a site visit. We received a letter from them on October 3rd, basically stating that the site had been stabilized efficiently and the stormwater was installed under, you know, in accordance with the order. They did have a couple comments on our originally submitted as-built plan, just to show the buffer zones and also some dimensions to various, um, to various features along the site from the wetland itself, which I submitted electronically to them and to Lisa, and also just submitted a hard copy of the revised as-built.
Um, yeah, so, I mean, if you just want to give an overall description, but Weston and Sampson is here to present, so...
Okay. This was the solar array, the dual-use solar array up on Tremont and Middle Street on Cabral, Jim Cabral's parcel and Joanne Racine's parcel. Site's been complete and stabilized, fencing's up, vegetation is all complete, and all the work in the buffer zone has been stabilized, stormwater management features have been functioning properly, and we, you know, respectfully request a certificate of compliance to close out the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, was there a remote or something for...
Um, that's his department, it's one of these two, I don't...
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Obviously, it probably would have been...
Um, for the presentation, which remote?
Um, you can use an mouse to click through.
Yeah, we might as well do it. Yeah, it's a big enough project. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name's Rihanna Summers, and I work for Weston and Sampson. As Lisa mentioned, we did a peer review of this request for certificate of compliance. This is just showing the as-built plans that were submitted by the applicant that we reviewed. We have a civil engineer that reviewed the as-bills and did a site visit. So we did issue just a couple of technical comments that were relatively minor. The applicant stated that in their COSU request that the project is in substantial compliance with the order of conditions, and they provided some attachments and documentation that the project, there are a couple of technical deviations between the plans and the as-bills, but based on our review, we determined that these deviations amount to very slight differences in volumes of the stormwater basins and elevations of the outlet pipes and structures when you compare the design plans with the as-built survey. And based on that, because of just how minor they are, it's our opinion that these are attributable to normal dimensional imperfections that are inherent in site construction. So we believe that this special condition has been satisfied. So the next comments, we did have a couple of comments on the as-bills. They did show the resource area boundaries and, of course, the work that was done, but the original as-bills were just missing a couple of the buffer zones and some of the local regulatory setbacks. So one of our comments was to add those on to the plans. And also, the original as-bills, they didn't show all of the, like, distances from fences, detention ponds, and roads. So that was another of our comments, and we did receive revised as-built plans earlier this week. And James Pearson from our office, he's the civil engineer that did the review, he reviewed the revised as-bills and also conducted a site visit back in September. And based on the revised as-bills, we feel that all of the comments have been addressed. They looked good. Um, they looked good and, uh, based on, um, James's site visit, um, he believes that all of the work has been substantially complete in accordance with the order. Um, and that he didn't observe any unacceptable deviations from the order on a site walk. Um, and then lastly, um, just related to some of the general conditions in the order relating to maintaining erosion and sediment controls, stormwater BMPs. Um, during the site inspection, the site as a whole was, um, observed to be stable, um, including the stormwater basins, which were heavily vegetated. There were a couple areas, um, and more low-lying areas that had a little bit sparser vegetation coverage, um, but they did not pose a risk of sediment transport. Um, so it's also Weston and Sampson's opinion that the site has been stabilized sufficiently, um, and provides reasonable protection against erosion. I think that was our last, our last comment, but yeah, based on, um, the civil engineer's review of the, the ASBIL plans, the revised ASBILs that came in, um, and the site visit that was conducted, we feel that all of the conditions have been satisfied.
Any member have a question, comment, or?
I have a question for Rich. Um, so some of the plantings that the planning board had, um, requested along the berm, uh, the buffer there.
Yes.
A lot of them died, are those?
Up in the front, you're talking about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so, um, our civil contractors expecting those trees to be, to be replaced, I think, this week.
Great.
Yep, so those are, that's on our radar, and they will be replaced.
Okay. And then, um, the only other question was, the, remember you put the pipes for temporary, um, release of some water over here in the northeast corner too? So, those pipes, are those all removed or we're keeping?
Captive.
Yeah, so those are cap, um.
Okay.
So, again, we, it's not a big idea to, in case we do have an event like that, leave those in, but they're capped off, so unless they are non-captive, will not be, they're essentially not used.
All right, and then one more question I just thought of. So is the farmer gonna farm underneath the panels?
Yes.
He's, he's, what, is he doing animals and crop?
I, I believe, I believe it's just gonna be row crops, so that would be, um, the way it's gonna make it's an idea, okay, and have their contractor on their bed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the intent under there, and I believe they started some of the preliminary prep work, uh, some of the, uh, the panels up.
Yeah.
Up front, um, for, it's gonna be row crop type of stuff up there, yes.
Yeah, they were gonna do rock pickings last month.
Neat.
Anyone in the audience have questions? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question, actually. This is just a procedural question, I guess, this is more of a question for down the line for other projects, I'm just curious how the, um, the solar projects with, uh, growing crops underneath, um, I think that's a cool concept, personally.
Yeah, dual use.
Yeah, anyway, I think it's cool.
Yeah.
Uh, but one of my questions that I have about it is that in the future, if those crops are used for commercial purposes, if that, if there ends up being another filing later on down the line, would that become exempt for being a commercial agricultural, you know, pre-existing commercial agricultural operation?
Well, yeah, I think this.
I'm just thinking for like later, if those become decommissioned over time, someday they're gonna be removed, something like that?
This pro, practice.
I'm just curious, doesn't, doesn't impact this, I don't, I don't think, I'm just curious, just in an academic sense.
I think it already wa, it already was pretty much exempt from.
Yeah.
A lot of the farming, but when you change the use to this, obviously, it's a different kind of thing. And you can't, if you, if you had wetlands crisscrossing this, you couldn't put panels in the wetland and you have to maintain twenty-five foot buffers, correct?
Right, right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and they're, um, as part of the, the solar, um, program, they're bound to keep it in agriculture with, and meet certain requirements of annual reporting of what's being planted and everything, so it's part of the, part of the process that they, you know, they apply for.
Gotcha.
To get this project approved.
Okay, no, I think it's neat, I'm not against the concept in any.
Yeah.
Anyway, I was just curious how the commercial agricultural exemption with those projects kinda plays out over the long term, but that was my only curiosity.
Yeah. Now, was there a pilot, does a pilot program with the town?
I believe they have a pilot.
Is it a twenty-year?
Yeah, yeah.
Is she gonna grow butternut, do you know? Uh, as he has.
That, that's a, that's a subtle butt, Jim. The, the rumor is he wants to go back growing butternut for.
Well, that can grow and find the sun.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
It wasn't, it wasn't portioned, it was still gonna be butternut because they have proper row spacing and, and the height of the panels allows enough sunlight to get.
Yeah, no, the rumors, the rumors around town, he wants to go back, uh, doing butternut. He was a big supplier for rocket basket, you know, real big.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to issue a certificate of compliance?
Oh, one more question, did the erosion controls get removed? Sorry.
So they were removed where, uh, the land or requests them to remove, the rest are still in place, we wanted to make sure we were.
Yeah, so they will, they will be now, are you gonna?
Uh, so, yeah, I think we have to go through the stormwater committee before we remove them.
All right, so.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, although, uh, Mr. where, uh, see what he thinks.
Yeah, you're gonna cut them though and just kinda let the mulch down?
Yeah, so let the mulch go and then I'll self-man call them removed for a second completely.
All right, yeah, sounds good.
Okay, we'll call for a vote to issue a certificate of compliance.
Sorry.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eva, you didn't say aye.
I didn't want to.
Okay, 'cause.
I'll tell, I'll tell you why, yeah.
It's okay, yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda is.
So, for the minutes, oh, Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, through the minutes, do we have one abstention?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, no, that's all, I'm just reflecting the minutes, do we have one abstention, all good.
Uh. Next, we have, uh, under enforcement, we have proposed mitigation plan that has been revised for, uh, two, three, seven, one County Street, map twenty lots.
Oh, we had one more under the certificates of compliance.
Did we get a complaint for the water?
You skipped one, Jim.
Uh, did you add that in after, I, I don't have it on my.
It was on the posted agenda, sorry. Cedar Street.
That's one we, that's the one we just.
We just did this one.
All right, I'll mail that, or do you wanna pick it up?
All right, I broke down ahead. Okay.
We'll request, uh, for that for you guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Hey, send it to, send it to us, send it to me.
Mail it?
Mail it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I don't know, I'll be back up here, yeah, yeah, send it in the mail.
All right, thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Okay, uh, next we have a request for a certificate of compliance from Cedar Street, map fifteen lot forty, uh, that's, uh, well number one A, project location at Cedar Street, uh, SE file number seventeen dash four seven one.
And they aren't here, um, but I did do a site visit with, um, Ernie from the water district, he was supposed to be here, he's not here. Um, I would ra, I don't, I would rather wait until he comes next month, you know?
Would you like a motion to ta, are you looking for a motion to table, Lisa?
Yeah.
Has he opened up, Jim?
Thank you.
Uh, yes, if that's gonna be, uh.
Right.
A good idea, because it, it's not gonna affect them. Okay, motion to table?
The COS for Cedar Street.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To November twenty-first, right?
Twenty-first, yep.
Okay. Okay, next is the enforcement order for two, three, seven, one, uh, County Street, map twenty lot sixty-five, um. Have we received, uh, plans?
So for twenty-three, uh, seventy-one County Street, I believe that the last, uh, where we had left off, Lisa, uh, sent an email with, uh, some added verbiage that she wants for notes onto the plans. So, we're gonna add those notes, the only thing that we would like to change is on, uh, I believe the first few items, she has a wetland, uh, scientist on there and will replace wetland scientist with North County group, as we've already been contracted to oversee all the work out there.
Okay, so the first two items, oh, 'cause the first two items I have is calculate the area.
No, right after those two.
Oh, okay, yeah, um, add note at top of construction sequence, all work to be overseen by.
North County group.
And what was the?
Uh, it should be the one right after that as well.
Add note, yeah, wetland scientist, so you're gonna be on that.
Yep. And if, uh, everybody's kosher with that, then we'll add those on the plans and then we, we can, uh, get everything in the way.
Did you guys see the comments that I got, um, September fourth?
I did look through them, um, I didn't have time to go through them in depth, 'cause I would like. I just wanted to touch on.
Yeah.
Some of your, uh, you wanted to touch on some of them?
You wanna, yeah, let's just read them into the, for the record, so. The plan looks good, which, um, few things to wrap it up. Calculate the area of disturbance in square feet, specifies the size of the row crop. That might have been one of your quick questions.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the restoration shall be completed within two years, the date of the final plan, so we have to figure out what the date of the final.
So the, uh, the date of the fa, final plan will be, uh, on your November here and when you can, you know, put everything to bed.
Okay, eleven twenty-one. Great, so it'll be within two years and so it'll be by eleven twenty-one.
Twenty-six.
Wow.
Twenty-six.
I'm an old lady, okay.
Okay.
Um. And then, um, we just added a note at the top, the construction sequence, all work to be overseen by North County group. And then another note that says, um, North County group to report to the conservation commission when by month of reports, including photos. And then, the next bullet, all waste products, refuges, debris, grump stump slash excavate, construction materials, et cetera, shall be contained and ultimately devo, deposited at an approved landfill and shall not be incorporated in any manner into the project. No mulch should be placed in the wetland resource areas and there shall be no pumping of water from the wetland resource area. And then the next bullet, no fuel, oil or other pollutants shall be stored in any other resource in the buffer zone, or in the buffer zone. Uh, any debris or dump material placed in the wetland resource area shall be removed. There should be no underground storage of fuel or other hazardous materials on the property or in the buffer zone. No trash dumpsters will be allowed within a hundred feet of the area subject to protection under the mass wetland protection act. That is a mass, uh, DEP requirement too. And then, prior to any work on site, the proposed elements of work shall be clearly marked with states of flags and shall be confirmed by the conservation commission. Such markers will be checked and replaced as necessary and shall be maintained until the construction is complete. Workers shall be informed that no use of machinery, machinery or storage of machinery or materials, stockpiling soil or construction activity is to occur beyond this line at any time. In any case of emergency problems or need to discuss the conditions with the conservation commission, please contact during business hours at seven, seven, four, eight, seven, two, zero, nine, four, six. Equipment for fuel and refueling operations shall be located in upland area, do you have an area outside the one hundred foot?
Yeah.
To do that, okay. And then the burial, burial of stumps and other types of construction refuge or other waste materials is prohibited in the buffer zone. All stockpiles of soils existing for more than one day shall be surrounded by row entrenched silk fence and shall be covered. I assume you're gonna haul most of this stuff.
Yeah, as soon as it comes up, it's hauled out.
Yeah.
So, there's no stockpile in there.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we will have a dumpster there for the, um, you know, the larger, you know, the trash and whatnot that comes out of there, but the material, that's hauled out.
Okay. All exposed soil finished grade surfaces shall be in the landscape and stabil, stabilized or loamed, seeding with mulch or layer of mulch straw away necessary, loamed seeding shall be held in place with jute netting. Outside of the loamed season, exposed soil finished grade surfaces shall be stabilized, the layers of, uh, mulch dry until climate conditions allow proceeding during construction, any area of exposed soils that will be left over for more than thirty days should be stabilized with mulch. Um, hay or other soil, obviously, I meant straw, you know that.
Nope, we're using hay.
Hay, hay. Temporary stabilization methods may include, but not limited to, hydro seeding, straw mats, jute netting, sawed or other conservation commission approved method. Erosion control devices shall remain in place and properly functioning until all exposed soils have been stabilized with final vegetative cover and the conservation commission or its agent has authorized a removal. Fertilizers utilized for landscaping and lawn care shall be slow released, slow, low nitrogen types and shall not be used within twenty feet of the wetland. Pesticides and herbicides shall not be used on the lawn within the buffer zone. This just, conditions shall include all certificates of compliances, um, any other work within a hundred feet of the wetland resource areas will require, then at new notice of intent or RDA, uh, shall be filed with conservation. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay, now, are, are we looking for approval of this plan tonight, or are we gonna go to next month?
Well, we didn't, we haven't gotten the final one yet.
Okay.
Except we'll have it next month, right?
Yeah, so, uh, next month you'll have the plan to approve and move on with, with us, so.
Okay.
It, it was basically just to go through the notes and, uh, just to make the, a couple of minor edits on it.
Okay, now, it's, it's looking good.
You bump it them right into the plan and then it's all.
It's looking good. You're gonna be here next month.
I am, right now. So you're meeting when, November twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Yeah, so I, I, I will be here, 'cause, uh, the next round is, uh, I get, uh, Ogden, Utah, and then Yakima, Washington. And it's actually warmer in those two spots in the city right now, no kidding.
Right now, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Eva has a question.
Okay, whoa.
No, no, I was, I was just, I was just asking, the site has been cleaned up, right?
Somewhat, you were gonna, you were gonna pre.
Yeah, uh, uh, he's, he's actually started to remove, uh, some of the, uh, nuances from the slope and he's actually started cutting in on the backside to get down to where he needs to cut.
Yeah, I really mentioned.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we've been out there a few times with him and I've been telling him where to go and how to get there.
Lisa, would some kind of fencing boundary be, should it be considered after the fact?
Yeah.
Well, there is, on our plan, there is a fence proposed at the top of the bank, because it's just a, a safety factor.
Yeah, so, um, after you submit that plan to us, I think it would be wise of us to take it in the field and look at it with you.
Yeah, that's fine, we can, uh, go out there and I can show you what's going on.
Great.
Yeah. Not a problem.
Okay, no, it, uh, okay, all right. So we will continue this until the twenty-first of November.
Yeah, and can, can you try to get it to me a few days before the meeting instead of.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I, I should be able to get it to you, uh, private.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, all right.
All right, thank you. And I pay a motion to continue to, um, November twenty-first.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, Zero Porton Street Enforcement Order, eleven twenty-eight twenty-two, um, restoration plan being implemented now.
Done.
Done.
No, but it really looks really good out there.
Yeah, I, I've been, I've been there and yes, it does look good.
So when the road gets in it. Yeah, for sure.
I meant, I meant to print something for you, but.
I didn't print anything either.
The cash is down.
This was Wendy's.
Okay, um, Lisa, what we want then, what we need is, is, is a letter of resta, or a letter of restoration to John.
I think we wanna let it go another growing season, right?
That looks real good, actually.
Yeah, it does, it does, it's kind of, well, it's, it's wet, that's why.
I think by next year, we should have, like, be able to say.
Okay, all right, yeah, I, I saw this.
Three photos, so the last three photos I took.
It's coming along nicely, great. Jack, I don't know if you can.
I went by there the other day, I caught them.
Yeah, okay, so send that back to Lisa. Okay, all right.
It's open, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so we can issue a. Yeah, uh, so we can issue some, uh, some kind of letter informing restorations are made after, you know, after this growing season. It's, it's pretty much complete now, but, uh, early next season, we're gonna see it just, just explode with growth.
I had, I told Lisa earlier tonight, I'm gonna overseed out one more time. And right now, I'm not able to do anything, so it's a good thing. So, but there are three trees that are dead that I'm gonna need to have to take down, so just wanna let you guys know I have.
Yeah.
And then the erosion controls next year, you'll, you'll just leave them up over the winter, yeah?
I have a pallet of erosion controls and anybody needs one.
We'll come out of that because sometimes situations come up.
Very good. I'm happy that everybody's satisfied. I'm satisfied and that's all.
You're trying.
Yeah.
It's great.
Well, happy for you too.
Should we, should we send future enforcement issues over to you?
Don't get any love back. I got enough issues.
Okay, uh.
Thank you very much.
All right, um.
Have a good day.
You too.
Uh, fourteen twenty, William Street map, eleven lot nine, uh, the violation, um, Lisa, you wanna discuss that?
Yeah, we don't actually have any updates on that and we haven't seen anything. He's still waiting for his consultant on that one.
Okay, um, nothing new.
Do you wanna skip over and take, um, on snacks?
Um, that's Hot Street?
Yeah.
We can get you out of here so you don't have to charge him as much.
Motion to take eighty-eight hundred over.
Is there a second? On my favor? Okay, eight eighty, Hot Street, uh, map nineteen, lot twenty.
I did look at the, uh, digital plan you emailed over. Mr. De Souza, do you have, uh, printout?
That's the one you emailed at three, three AM in the morning. Hey, where, where you want to play?
I've done emails, haven't.
I was kind of impressed, John.
Were you?
Yeah, I was like, yeah.
Oh, I, I've done many of those.
He's a commander, he's a. Thank you. I ha- I have to say, I haven't looked at it till now.
Was this one taken from the space shuttle?
It was, back in nineteen ninety-five. So, the, uh, the packet of the photographs that you have there, um, shows, you know, the first image, that's, uh, the clearest image that, uh, is available from nineteen ninety-five. But as you can see, the house sits here and you can see the outline of the wooded area and the grassed area and how large it basically was at that point. If you flip over to the next page, you can see the image from two thousand and one. As the images are getting better, you can clearly see the edge of the lawned area, the house, and, uh, uh, what was usable at that time. The next one is obviously from two thousand and three, you know, the, the, at the, at that time, the photographs are getting better and better, but you can see the utilized area. Reason why I'm going through these photos is because when we get to the plan, you'll see how much of a use area was actually reduced out there on the property. Um, then there's the next image of, from October of two, uh, two thousand and four and you can clearly see, uh, there were grass and the, uh, the vegetated area in the current use. The one from two thousand and five, probably one of the cleaner images. And, and again, everything is pretty much, uh, all, all defined. You can see everything, uh, pretty clear and what's evident. The one from two thousand and seven even has, it shows the house and you can see now the land use is starting to shrink. As my client is getting older, you know, uh, he's not utilizing as much of the property as he once was. But you can see the swimming pool there on the property. You can see the lawned area and then you can see that the, the vegetation is starting to overgrow because he's not utilizing as much of the property. From two thousand and ten, this is, uh, probably, uh, right, right around, I wanna say, uh, after winter and the, uh, and, uh, everything's just starting to turn green. But you can, you can see the use area and you can see how it's getting smaller and you can see the, uh, the woods and everything encroaching onto the property. Then we go to the next one from two thousand and twelve. This is probably sometime around November because the leaves are all off on the, uh, on the trees. You can see the clear, uh, the definition of the grass, the house, and the area. From two thousand and fourteen, this appears to be about the middle of, uh, the year on there. You can see the house, the vegetation now is actually started to, uh, spread even more and the lawn area has gotten smaller. So, so you can see there was a, uh, reduction in use over, over the years and from, uh, to what it is right now. So, if you go to your colored map, so you can see what the use area was back in two thousand and one and we outlined that around the house here and everything else. So, when we went out there, we flagged up the wetlands and we, and the wetlands are the lighter green and they've actually encroached upon the, uh, area that used to be used that hasn't been used in a while. And you can see it goes up near his shed around and then comes it back out and around. We've also located the, uh, the woodchips, the pile of the woodchips where they are. For the most part, they're outside of the, uh, twenty-five foot except for one small area. They're about, uh, twenty feet away from the, uh, the wetland area. And then you can see, we also located the edge of the grass. It's not highlighted, but you can see the edge of the lawn and how, how it runs through this area. And, and you can see that the lawn space has gotten a lot smaller than what it used to be. So, all in all, if you look at it, my client used to utilize a lot more of the property and because of what he has been doing over the years and cut down on the use of the property, the wetlands have encroached. But at the same time, his current use is still less than what it used to be. The wetland has increased some, but he is still utilizing what he should be allowed to be utilizing.
Want to say that again, please?
He's utilizing what he should be allowed to be utilizing because his use has been trimmed from the previous where it used to go way out until what it is right now.
Now, how long have the cows been on the property?
So, he's had animals here and there. I know, I'm not sure, you know, we can ask him when the cowpen went up. Uh, but he has had animals out here on the property, uh, throughout the years.
I've visited the site a few times and I, I have to say, I think that BVW, especially in the vicinity of Flags fourteen, on to where it's not numbered anymore, heading east.
Oh, the, uh, the, the layer must have been off, but it, it actually starts at one up near the road and goes all the way up to number, uh, uh, ten.
Yeah, so like.
About thirteen and fourteen.
One through fourteen I'm the most concerned about because I don't think that BVW is thirty feet off the road. I think it's closer than that. Um, but, um, we obviously have to do some field check to this. Um. So, I like the colors.
Yeah, it helps.
Definitely.
Yeah. But the, uh, I mean, you can see from this to where you got the two shades of green and, uh, the, uh, from, uh, uh, two thousand and one, how much was used to be utilized and what is actually being used right now.
Lisa, are you gonna show me on this Google Earth map where the, um.
Where the cows are?
No, where the, uh, approximately, I can see them.
That's where the heavy line is.
This heavy line right here where.
Actually, this is all cleared in twenty-three, but when I was out there. So, thank you.
Oh, did somebody take a little island keeping because of the dirt?
Yeah, so, I mean, I know it doesn't go. This is a previously cleared area and I agree this is where previously cleared areas should go out, but this is where the cows are now.
And, and most of that, even according to his drawing, is in the, either the twenty-five no-touch or the fifty-foot buffer.
I, I have to go in the field and verify that.
Well, that, that was my question. It's like, it just looks, the way it just cuts in relative to the house.
Wetlands are right next to the driveway.
You know, uh.
He's right, you know, a lot of land is, um, wet.
I'm looking at a, we're looking at a ten-year-old picture now at this point.
So, this is twenty-three, I'll show.
So, is this, is it follow this shape right here? Is that working on?
Uh, yeah, so this, this is actually, Phil was right in here for some boats.
Yeah, so we're, so we got the woodchips. Yeah, we have that, uh, up here, but the rubber line is basically where they were at this.
Yeah, but I don't know if you can run around with your, because actually, they would chuck this area once wetland before you cleared it and dumped the woodchips.
Because when we were out there, we didn't.
And a lot of woodchips up here too and through here.
Yeah.
He shows those, but I, I think the wetland, see this gray?
Yeah, see, our rubber line actually cuts into here. It cuts into here. Yeah, but in here, it almost half of the, uh, and all, all the, uh, pile.
It shows it thirty feet out to the road, about, huh?
From here to here, yeah, that, that, yeah, to, to, to back to back to the road. And then it, it swings up and around where the old, uh, the portion of this is, is in the, uh, who, what, and come with. When we hand all the, the, this is basically the real, the soil is, can't be visioned in that. Right, I guess one of my questions that I'm asking is if, if this is an existing yard area that has been in use? This, that's my question.
This has, but I don't.
Well, if you look here, it's, it hasn't been, this is where the, uh, the cows are now, right here. So, this has all been altered. This has all been altered and I'm going, and so that's, so in the past ten years, that's been cleared and I don't know when it was cleared.
Right, so that's what I'm asking is if it's been cleared for, for.
We don't see it here.
Yeah, I mean.
Let me pull up on the.
If it's been cleared for so many years, at a certain point.
So, this is back in two thousand and five, the pen is right here.
Right, so this is.
But that's beyond, uh, there's a five-year limit on, on.
It's not, but, but it's not a commercial farm.
Not a commercial. That's what I was, that's what I was gonna use, commerc- it's not a commercial farm.
Consider an existing lawn area that you're gonna use will be. I mean, we can expand, we, we can expand these photos to show more of that, but a portion of this has been used in the past and we have to focus on focus as well.
You know, but it was used a hundred years ago. It's, uh, or fifty years, even twenty years ago. It's, it, uh, it's been discontinued and so it reverts back to, to.
Well, it, it, it depends.
Right, so my question is, how long has this area been in use for, I guess?
Right now.
If this is, right, if this has been, if this has been in continuous use for fifteen years.
Well, you can see, you can see it hasn't been. It hasn't been.
I'm gonna show you.
And so, that's probably been a year right there. So, it was just, not even a year.
So, this is a relatively new spot for the cows?
And it's, what, what is the expression, residential farm, not commercial?
It's recreational, yeah. I mean, you keep them, you're not keeping animals for, to make money.
So, the pen is right in this area right here.
Yeah, so, this is a twenty-one. Let me pull up another, I'll tell her that's older. Let's go back to fifteen.
So, here the area right here.
But, but actually, you've expanded it because. Let me use this. It's not gonna.
Well, my pen and leash.
This area is more like this area, but the cows are more in this whole area. So, this.
It's kind of squinting hairs today.
I don't know, because they're in the twenty-five foot no-touch and they could have come to us and asked for a permit. We asked them to get it flagged two years ago. They tried to put the cows in, uh, in this area, cleared it, filled it with mulch. This whole area. And I said, you need to get it flagged. They got it flagged by someone else, never presented it to us. And now here we are, we're finally seeing a plan. Had we, we read the plan, really sweetened and discussed it, it could have worked through them because, I mean, we probably would have allowed some of it, but I, I don't understand why it proceeded without.
Yeah.
A filing of some sort, right?
Yeah.
And does it stretch throughout here now?
Um.
Temporary stretch there.
Yeah, it's a, uh, new temporary, uh.
Need two foot deep thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Cow, cow.
And then the other thing we have is this whole area here was filled for boats, right there.
There were boats there and then they were, they were coming in with, with more woodchips.
Yeah. The grade, the whole grade of that whole area was changed without a permit. I'm trying to work with you guys and I just.
So, what is it that we're trying to accomplish? Is that we wanna confirm the locations of the wetlands and then once we confirm, we'll mutually agree the locations of the wetlands, try to propose an alternate sighting? If there's one possible, is that, is that kind of what we're looking to accomplish?
Yeah, I mean, uh, obviously, he wants to keep the, uh, the cows. So, if, if we have to rearrange the shape of the cowpen out here, then we will. But ultimately, you know, he wants to keep utilizing what he's utilizing and I wanted to show the commission that his use actually has been cut way down from what it used to be. You know, he's getting older, it's getting, uh, tougher to mow all the little lawn like everybody else. So, as, as he stopped using it, obviously, everything keeps up. So, I mean, he's willing to work with the commission, but at the same time, he'd like to keep what he currently has active and if we gotta rearrange the, uh, cowpen somewhat, then we, uh, are the show. And, uh, hope everybody comes to a, uh, a consensus and, uh, they go from there.
So, the Whitman soils is on wetland, but obviously, very.
Well, the Woodbridge isn't too much better either. But it is what it is, I mean.
And I just, I would remind the commission, as he had noted about our previous meetings, that he, he was relying on the wetland map and he, you know, he wasn't aware that he couldn't rely on that and that showed the wetlands hundreds of feet away.
Yeah.
So, he.
But, but, but we, I did tell him verbally in person more than once.
But he was obviously working there long before you were involved or anyone was involved with this and he was, um, and he felt, in speaking with him, somewhat justified because he'd been taxed as if this was a potential buildable lot in addition to his house. in speaking with him, somewhat justified because he'd been taxed as if this was a potential buildable lot in addition to his house.
So, that's something that this can help with. I think once we get the delineation approved, we can help, you know, bring it to the assessor's attention that this is not buildable.
Right.
And this should be taxed different.
Right, and at least to reduce his, uh, rate.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure it's not cheap.
Yeah, I, I live on the muddy cove brook and I think my entire house is in the twenty-five foot no touch zone. Hundred and fifty years ago was built. And the, uh, the wetland maps show wetlands, you know, hundreds of feet from my house, but.
Yeah.
No, I've had the, I've had the muddy cove brook in my house.
I'm sure you have, not once.
Yeah, so, I think like, um, well, if anybody wants to do a site visit, we'll kind of just look along the line, we'll check some soils. I don't know if I can get in there with the animals, though, that's the only thing.
Uh, well, we, we, our, our flags are around the pen, so it's.
I know, ironically.
Well, it, it's only right in through here, then it kind of veers way off and then there's a stream, but that's good, it's hundreds of feet away.
So, you, yeah, that's plenty far away, but you're saying if I check the soils in this area, it will be apple soil?
It, yeah, I mean, we, when we.
And the flag is still up, even though you can't see the numbers?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, all.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one is here and then it runs out up and around.
Right, so I guess my question to the other members would be, are we in agreement that that's kind of what we're looking to accomplish tonight is to maybe set a date, confirm the flags, confirm the locations of the wetlands and then see if there's alternative sighting that we can propose or something like that? Anybody else have other thoughts or I don't, I don't know.
Or if we keep it, if we allow them to keep it there, maybe like, an option of the, um, mitigation where.
Yeah, do something, another portion of the site to compensate for the present location of the cows, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's get the, uh, the wetland approved, the line approved and then we can, uh, maybe the pen would have to be reduced in size, I, I, you know, we will view that and, um.
He's got enough there, Jim, you know, if he can, you know, recoup some of it elsewhere. You know what I mean, taking, we could move it back or whatever. Give him some of his land back and then get it reduced so it's not a buildable lot, you know? If, uh.
If, if you let me know when you want to go out there, I'll, I'll.
All right, so.
Try to get out there next week?
Yeah, if we could do it probably, um, if we could do it later in the week, that would probably end up being the bottom.
So, like Thursday?
Yeah.
Because Friday we're not open.
That's all right, I'm not open Friday either, but I'm still there.
Yeah, let's, let's set a date, a Thursday, if it's not raining and, because obviously I don't look at the, look for a lot of rain.
Well, right now, there's no rain at all in sight for the next ten, twelve days.
I hope so.
Yeah, it's just, uh.
We've had enough.
We're, we're actually just getting dry again.
It is, I know it is, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, so if anybody wants to go out there, we'll try next Thursday.
Well, you can say when, when, you know, when it's going to be.
Yeah, just let us know what time, I'll try to, I'll try to be available.
Okay.
Oh, they're, they're recording for cable.
They're what?
Uh, they're recording for cable, Mr. Farnett. These, these don't amplify our voices, I don't think. I believe these are just picking up the cable for, uh.
This, this does not go to you, this goes to cable.
There's no speakers in here.
Okay.
You want us to talk louder?
I can't hear you, what?
We'll talk louder.
That would be great.
Okay.
I don't have little kids anymore, so I'm not used to talking really loud.
Okay. I never heard anything he said the other time.
Well, that's good.
He lives on High Street.
Okay, so.
Do you want to look at this?
All right, so, uh, we're planning on, uh.
Did you want to look at this? This is eight-eighty, this is eight-eighty heart.
You want to see the pen?
That's why I'm here, I wanted to see what my neighbor was doing.
If otherwise donors are hearing, can we just give them a copy to review of the audience if they're.
No, Reynolds, I don't.
How are you, Mr. Farnett?
All right, so, right, right now, it's going to be, uh, site visit on Thursday of each week.
Yeah.
And you're going to let us know, uh, what time and.
What time do you guys want it?
That's more than, right here, the wetland.
I'm doing on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's basically.
If it was to leave the day, I could, I could probably make.
The basement of the, uh.
I wish I could.
The wetland. This shows what he used to use, way out here.
All right, then.
But as he got older.
Mr., I'm trying to keep it to eight.
The wetland crept up, so now the wetlands are here.
Okay, all right, uh, I don't know if you want to go do that on the side, I think we're all set with you now, if you want to deal with Bill, maybe on the back table.
We're all set, all right, yeah, go ahead, yeah, we got a table right there.
Bill, you can have it. You want to keep it?
No, I want to.
Okay, on the back table, Bill. You can spread it out there. Okay, uh, next. Okay, that's going to be, uh.
Thank you.
Sorry? Yes, ten thirty-three Oak Street.
So, we're going to continue this to next month?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Zajak, this is.
A motion to continue?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Keep him in line.
Okay, uh, twenty-four seventy Pleasant Street.
He's not here, but, um. He was having a hard time getting a proposal from Zenith. Maybe I should just try and tell him to try some other. A lot, a lot of, uh, you know, engineers don't want to deal with problem sites when they have so many things going on.
Um, okay, so, uh, is, this is not something we, we are going to continue because it's, it's not.
Yeah, actually, basically.
Just an update.
Okay, update, okay, uh, um. Seven-ten Center Street.
Um.
Matt ever call you?
He never, he never called me.
I'll see if I can find him again.
Okay, and that, and that is, um.
Well, the good news is he's not doing any more work and he's leaving it all alone, so.
No, he is, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's not a big deal.
Ten seventy Smith Street.
Um, I asked them for an update since I met them and Zenith last, um, last month.
Okay, so.
And Zenith was providing them with a proposal. So, we're, we're just, you know, waiting for them to sign the proposal. Basically, what they told me was they're not in a hurry to get it done because they're not doing anything this year. I'm reminding them that this is a violation that we're trying to deal with. But they're thinking of it as their overall landscape plan for their property.
All right, so we'll, we'll follow up next month.
The good news is they're.
Stopped.
Stopped.
Yeah, they stopped and they're working with us.
Okay, under other business, uh, uh, we have the meeting minutes from April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four and September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, these were, uh, uh, the, um, April seventeenth was a joint meeting. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes, uh, April seventeenth?
Motion to accept minutes from April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'm sorry, I didn't, um. Get the minutes for last month on, but obviously.
Okay, well, well, let's finish off, we got a, we got a motion for April seventeenth. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, all right, and so, and September meeting, we'll, I will do those minutes, uh, next, uh, month?
Yeah, and, and this is one more, one more thing, I forgot to put the line on this for your signature. Tell him what we already told him. You want to sign it? That's the one we approved, so that, there's no question in my mind of whether or not we approved it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, next we have the draft of the conservation, uh, uh, bylaw changes. Uh, we're going to have the reading of the individual, uh, changes that we have made. We had a reading last, uh, month. Maybe we can go with some kind of, uh, sequence, reading just the changes so that we can, uh, uh, get those, uh, approved by the full commission. I'm looking at, uh, uh, number one, uh, let's see, two juris- jurisdiction, under the jurisdiction, uh, we're going to add in and lands within one hundred feet of any of the offered said resource areas, river streams and creeks, whether perennial or intermittent, and lands within two hundred feet of any river stream or creek. Under, uh, part three, applications for permits and requests for determination, a local fee of, per the table below, made payable to the town of Titan, is required for all filings in addition to the local portion set forth by the DEP. And it says, see below, section sixteen, the commission may waive the filing fee, consultant fee and cost and expenses for a permit application or request for determination filed by a government agency and shall waive them for a request, uh, for determination filed by a person having no financial connection with the property which is the subject of the request. Under the same section, a different paragraph, um, it deals with who is, uh, um, who is going to be collecting the fee, it says, or it's duly authorized agent. That would be added in. Under coordination with other boards, um, it, it's, uh, it's going to be that, that they are going to have to add in.
It's going to strike select board.
Uh, okay, the, the, it says, to the select board, the select board would be eliminated and in its place, select men. And also added in, an highway superintendent to get, um, the information that work is being proposed. Under section seven, setbacks, um, we're going to add in part E. Vernal pools should hold special protection and will have a mitigation corridor of at least one hundred feet to other wetlands or natural environment from the mean annual high water mark that will be left in its natural and undisturbed state. Under section nine, definitions. This would be paragraph, uh, two, will be added at the end of that paragraph. It shall include, in addition to scientific definition, found in the regulation under the Wetland Protection Act, any confined basin or depression, not occurring in existing lawns, gardens, landscaped areas or driveways which, at least in most years, hold water for a minimum of two continuous months during the spring and or summer, contains at least two hundred cubic feet of, of water at some time during most years, is free of adult predatory fish populations and provides essential breeding and rearing habitat functions for amphibian reptile or other vernal pool community species, regardless of whether the site has been certified by the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. The boundary of the resource area for vernal pool shall be one hundred feet outward from the mean high annual high water line defying, defining the depression, but shall not include a lawn, garden, landscaped area or developed area in existence at the time of the effective date of this provision in this chapter. There's going to be a new section, section eleven, and it's going to be burden of going forward and burden of proof. Paragraph A, at the end of the existing paragraph A, which, which is there, burden of going forward, the project proponent shall have the burden of going forward with credible evidence from the, from a competent source in support of all matters asserted pursuant to subsection B below. Uh, B, uh, proof, uh, burden of proof. I'm going to let you read that section.
Number one, perfect work. The applicant shall have the burden of proving microponderance of the credible evidence that any proposed work and its natural and consequential cumulative impacts and effect shall have no adverse impact upon any of the bylaw wetland values and further. Shall contribute to the protection of the wet, by, bylaw wetland values by complying with the general performance standards established for each bylaw resource area. Failure to meet the burden of proof shall be cause for the Conservation Commission to deny the application for a permanent work, along with any work or activity proposed therein. Two, determinations of applicability and resource delineation. The applicant shall have the burden of proving by preponderance of the credible evidence that the Conservation Commission does not have jurisdiction over the proposed activity and work in a request for determination of applicability and that the boundaries of the resource areas subject to protection under the bylaw bylaw resource areas are accurate in a request for determination of resource delineation. Three, determination of significance or non-significance. The applicant requesting a determination of significance or applying for a permit for work shall have the burden of demonstrating by clear and convincing evidence that the bylaw resource area is not significant and does not play a role in to the protection of one or more bylaw wetland values. Four, waiver. The commission may waive a performance standard set forth in these bylaws. The person requesting a waiver of a performance standard shall have the burden of demonstrating by clear and convincing evidence that A, there is no reasonable conditions or alternatives that would allow the proposed activity to proceed in compliance with said bylaw. B, avoidance, minimization, or mitigation have been employed to the maximum extent practical in the proposed work, including all mitigation measures and the natural and consequential cumulative effects of the work will have no significant adverse impacts upon any of the bylaw wetland values. C, the project provides benefits of demonstrable public interest and D, the project is otherwise in compliance with this bylaw. Five, waiver for rare species habitat, notwithstanding above, where the project limit of work is within the whereabouts and estimated rare species habitat is designated on the most current map prepared by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program in NHESP, the commission shall be diligent in its review of the proposed activity. The commission may consider waiving the rare species performance standard when the following conditions are met in addition to the requirements of the bylaw. The applicant for a waiver of a performance standard shall have the burden of demonstrating by clear and convincing evidence that A, the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, NHESP, has been consulted and has issued a formal determination prior to filing a request with the commission. And B, the project has been designed in accordance with any formal determination of the NHESP to address the standards in the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act and its implementing regulations at three-twenty-one CMR ten-point-zero-zero. And C, at least fourteen days prior to the public hearing, the applicant must prove to the commission the NHESP determination and accompanying comments. The commission cannot close the hearing until the NHESP has been consulted and has written, submitted written comments.
Okay, section fifteen, exemptions. Or exceptions, uh, A, the application and permit required by this chapter shall not be required for work performed for normal maintenance or improvement of land and agricultural use as defined by the Wetlands Protection Act Regulation at three-ten CMR ten-point-oh-four. Provided, however, nothing contained within the provision shall prohibit the commission from exercising its full enforcement powers under this chapter and the Wetlands Protection Act, should it determine the activity is not normal maintenance or improvement of land and agricultural use. B, the permit and application required by this chapter shall not be required for maintaining, repairing, or replacing, but not substantially changing or enlarging an existing and, uh, lawfully located structure or facility used in the service of the public to provide electric, gas, water, telephone, telegraph, or other commu- telecommunications services, provided that the structure or facility is not substantially changed or enlarged. Provided that written notice has been given to the commission prior to the commencement of work and provided that the work conforms to performance standards and designs specification. and designs specifications adopted by the commission. C, the permit and application required by this chapter shall not apply to emergency projects necessary for the protection of the health or safety of the public, provided that the work is to be performed by or has been audited to be performed by an agency of the Commonwealth or a political subdivision thereof, provided that advance notice or or written has been given to the commission prior to the commencement of work or within 24 hours after commencement, provided that the Conservation Commission or its agent certifies the work as an emergency project, provided that the work is performed only for the time and place certified by the Conservation Commission for the limited purposes necessary to abate the emergency, and provided that within 21 days of commencement of any emergency project, a permit application shall be filed with the commission for review as provided in this chapter. Upon failure to meet these and other requirements for the commission, the commission may, after notice and a public hearing, revoke or modify emergency project approval and order restoration and mitigation measures. D, the exceptions provided in the Wetland Protection Act I and Regulations 310 CMR 10.02-2 shall apply under this chapter. Okay, Section 16, Fees. Okay, abbreviated Notice of Area Resource Delineation. The fee is going to be $150 payable to the Dayton Conservation Commission. Notice of Intent, which includes one-site inspection, $150.
Did we want to back up and include one-site inspection for an ANRAD?
I'm sorry, I-
Abbreviated Notice of Resource Area Delineation. Do we want to include one-site inspection?
Oh, yes, that would be appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion to amend the bylaw change proposal to include one-site inspection under the ANRAD on the Section 16 Fees Table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, additional site inspections, $50. Amended Order of Conditions includes one-site inspection, $100. Request to Extend Order of Conditions, $100. Request for a Certificate of Compliance includes one-site inspection, $50. Replacement of an Original Order of Conditions, $50. Request to an Extended Order of Conditions, $50. After-the-Fact Filing, $250.
We have a duplicate. Request to extend Order of Conditions was already up above, so let's cross one of them out.
Motion to amend Section 16 bylaw proposal and strike the second appearance of request to extend an Order of Conditions.
Okay, all right.
Two, yeah, one's $50, one's $100.
We'll keep the 100.
Okay.
We've got to get rid of the-
There was a motion made to-
Strike the $50 one?
$50 one.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Request to Extend, okay. Okay, after the fact filing, $250.
And then can I back up to the very beginning? Did you read the new title?
The new title for the Dayton bylaws is Regulations, Bylaws, and Policies.
No.
That's the, that's the striked out one. The new one is the one-
Sorry, I should- I should have made that red, I'm sorry, yeah.
Dayton Conservation Commission bylaw.
Yep.
And I did present this at the last Selectmen meeting. I'm not going this week, but the one the week before that. I happened to be there for another bylaw proposal that I was doing anyway, to order this here. So I happened to be there, so I just presented a high-level view. We didn't-
Thankfully, you were there.
Yes, thankfully, I didn't have to read the whole text at that meeting either. So we just went over to the high level and just touched on some of the things that we wanted to do from a high-level perspective, like increase the language to short protection for vernal pools, amended the cross, you know, the cross-board coordination with other boards, recognize that Lisa has been duly authorized to accept 53G proposals on the commission's behalf.
And filing fees.
Yeah, and the filing fees, yep, exactly. So I just touched on all those. One thing that was a request of the Selectmen is that when we email over to them our final draft for exactly how we'd like this to appear is to please either use bold, underline, or a different font to show the amendments, just for the clarification of the public.
That's what we have right here for the red.
Right, but this is going to be printed out black and white for the-
Oh, I see, I got you, okay.
So that if we could either use bold, underline, or a different font.
What do you think, underline?
Underline, I think is probably easier.
Yeah, as long as you don't use wing bags, it would be fine.
Okay, now, we are all set to go. If we vote on this now, we are all set to go to town meeting with this.
Two, couple more things. I will need to do two legal notices.
No.
Oh, I don't-
That's only for zoning by law.
Oh, all right.
Okay, so-
But one more thing that I didn't put in here that I wanted to get your, all your opinion on. A lot of towns require, and the Wetlands Protection Act requires, a PLS or a PE for plans, plans we get, right? A stamp by one or the other. That kind of eliminates the, we're going to use a GPS and be 30 feet off kind of thing. Do you guys want to require it? And where would you put it? In here?
I don't think I'm there yet, to be honest.
Okay, so we are, if we vote on this tonight to approve the bylaw changes, so long as it's printed up and given to the Selectmen, we are ready to put it on the warrant. Am I correct?
I think so, yeah. I just have to underline and-
Yep, okay.
Provide it and attend the meeting. The meeting is November 14th.
That's the special time of meeting, yep.
Okay.
And that's at what time?
I believe 7:00 PM at the high school.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to accept the bylaw changes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Jack seconded it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're ready to go to-
All right.
Wait a minute, what do we have here? Bills payable?
Right, yeah.
Do we have any? I've got to sign, I probably taken care of everything. What's this, what's Beta, oh, we have Beta invoice?
Yeah. Where is it?
Well, you know, as I look at the, as I look at the numbers here, you've got project number, and then it looks like 21,100.
That's exactly, that's exactly what it is.
She wants some coffee money, Kim.
No, I'm sorry, where did it go? Do you, do you guys have it? Beta was requesting that we provide payment for a couple of calls, calls we had with the engineer for Forest, our Beta, our peer review consultant for Forest Hills. Sorry, I've got to look for it, hang on. It could be anywhere in this. Can you guys double-check that it's up, whether it's up there or not? The invoice?
Let's see if I stole it or not.
Yeah.
No, I didn't take- I got something here, Forest Hill invoice.
Yep, there it is.
Okay, I got two of them here, okay. We have Forest, this is- All right, we have for $1,046.32 to Beta.
Do you want to pay that? I mean, they did the work.
And what work did the, actually, let me ask you then, is this something we can discuss in open session?
Payment of the invoice, or what the results were?
If it has anything to do with something that could materially weaken the town's position or ongoing-
I think paying the invoice is not going to do anything.
Well-
Was it work that the commission legitimately requested?
Yeah, DEP requested, let me back up. The applicants appealed that decision.
All right, this, this should be executive session. We should either schedule another meeting to discuss this?
Uh, I don't think so, because it's pretty, it's an open, it was an open conversation where DEP just requested that we tell them what we would want to improve on the project. So we asked the engineer for input. We, I'm not giving you specifics.
You know, it's-
You know?
So if this is work that the commission ordered, then we should pay for it. If it's not work that the commission ordered, we can pay.
Yeah, we called Beta. We needed to call Beta.
Okay. So it sounds like we do-
So now, we got two bills here from Beta. Am I correct?
Isn't it the same bill?
No.
No.
One's for $1,046, and the other one's $1,700.
And I have a stack of bills in the office that I just got for another-
Oh, you know, there's a $30 or $0.33 adjustment on this bill, though.
Oh, okay.
So it looks like they adjusted it for mileage or something.
Total. Wait, is this the-
The total for this task, the tasks that could be incurred in the bill is the 135, 135.40. The total for the private is 1076.65, which is because there's $41.01 that's reversible, so it's a mileage.
Okay, so is that the, this the same here?
Can I see it?
Oh, yeah, this is the same here. This is the same-
Can I, can I see the invoice real quick? Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, so it's 1,000.
It was $30 more than what we got here, right?
You know what, I'm going to question it, because October 2nd, it was 1,076.65, and then, it looks like they adjusted. We shouldn't be getting charged for, oh, Jonathan had mileage. Oh, okay. That's old mileage they built? I'm going to question it.
Yeah, if we could get a breakdown of what, what the whole breakdown-
Okay, once we do, well, let's, let's pay up to the higher amount. We'll, we'll, we'll-
Well, you're authorized to sign the bills, so it really doesn't matter whether we vote for it or not.
Okay.
Do you want to-
Now, Lisa, what's that other one that says April 17? Wait a minute, no, I got a, what's it, Project Number Two. And there's all kinds of numbers there, it's-
It's this one.
Oh, it's that one, okay.
Yeah, Project Number 21, Beta Project Number 21.10. I mean, sorry, 189, I'm sorry, I can't read numbers tonight. 1,000.
No, it's, no, it's 10.
10,89. I need more glass, better glasses. And the amount of 1,046.32.
So, okay, so it's the 1,000, okay, let's just-
It's this. Well, let's pay the amount without the mileage, and if they question it, I'll say, well, there shouldn't have been any mileage.
Okay. All right, so we're going to vote on it then, and just, uh, A motion to pay it?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lisa, I got it signed over here. All right. Okay, legal fee budget is, what do we have, $5,000 on that?
Do we have an update? I don't, I don't know what it is.
Oh, I didn't bring it.
Okay, it's good. But you're now listening.
Yep, and then what we can do is, I can communicate with Lisa what the state of that budget is from the special fees in the town meeting, where they set aside a little bit of money for us. If it looks like we're going to need a year-end transfer, then the advice that I got from our outgoing in-home town administrator was to let the FinCom know, because they do have a year-end transfer budget. So if we think that we're going to incur expenses that go beyond that, then we can let them know to see if they're willing to absorb some of that. And otherwise, we, we have that conversation and see what we need to do.
Okay. The last item on the agenda is to accept the resignation of our Conservation Agent.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, we have closing our 53G accounts on there as well.
Oh, okay.
Not agent.
No, I said-
Better not be.
I said assistant.
I said agent.
I said, oh, no, I didn't mean agent.
Are you trying to say something?
Deny, vote no.
The whole time, people trying to get rid of-
What, what 53 account are we closing out?
Oh, perfect, I'm glad you asked. I would like to propose a motion to direct the Treasurer's Office to close out the 53G account associated with 903 Tremont 624 Middle Street, now that the COC has been issued.
So moved.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion to request that the Conservation Agent identify any projects that might have 53G accounts still open. I can review them with you.
Yeah, I have one in mind right now.
All right, all right, do you, you know what, it would actually be better, because we need to list them specifically when we send letters to my office. We have to list them specifically, so when I present them to the town accountant to close them out. So if you happen to know them offhand, otherwise, we can just work together and, over the next month. And then next month, we can come up with a list of all the ones that are ready to be closed out.
I know one, but I don't know the amount off the top of my head. Is that okay?
No, that's fine.
All right, so the Notice of Intent, we will use peer review services from Weston Sampson, from Robert and Karen Lele for Zero Maple Swamp Road, map 1198, 9A DEP file number 017-0507. That one can be closed out, and they actually asked for the money back to close.
I'd like to propose a motion to direct the Treasurer's Office to close out the 53G account associated to Zero Maple Swamp Road under applicant last name Lele.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go on to the resignation of the Conservation Commission Assistant.
Motion to accept the resignation of the Conservation Commission Assistant.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion?
But what do we want to do about the position? Like, do we want to look for someone else? With a joint position with Seward?
We have talked about it. How, is Seward going to-
Yeah, isn't that a joint deal?
Yeah, it's a joint-
It's a joint deal, yeah.
Well, let us, let us go for an assistant. Now, I think the Seward Department has more hours than, than we have with the assistant.
10 hours, yeah. I mean, personally, I, I don't really like the joint position idea.
Long-term, I'd really like to disentangle that.
Yeah.
We really don't want that. I don't think, because we want somebody who's going to be the kind of applicant facing public, facing, facing the commission, and if that face can only represent the commission for half the time or less, I think that it creates confusion. It's going to create friction with the Seward Commission.
Okay, so we would have to advertise then for a eight or 10-hour position? Is someone even going to look at that?
Something that we could do is, we could think about breaking it up, where even if we don't utilize the full eight hours, we could advertise to the clerical union to see if anybody in the clerical union would like to attend the meetings in order to do the minutes, or we can just watch the minute, the meetings on YouTube and do the minutes. I'm on CPC as well, as a representative of CONCOM, and we have somebody there who is our clerk, who comes just to take the minutes, they're not a member. They just come there hourly, employee, remember, the clerical union?
Yeah.
And they just pick up a couple of extra hours to make a little extra money, and they take care of, take care of some of the housekeeping items for the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I mean- Yeah, I mean, I mean, one in particular is all those files we have to gather right now.
Right, and that's, that's something that we could, that could be as simple as just send in a letter to the selectmen to request that we ask the clerical union to be anybody interested in picking up some extra duties.
Okay, can we, is that a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
I hear it.
Okay.
So it would be up to eight hours a week?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. At whatever, at whatever rate, I mean, we've got a certain amount of money that we can pay, it would have to be at that rate?
Would it? Well, would it be at their existing rate with the town?
That would be a question that we would want to ask the union, certainly for the clerical union.
Okay.
It would probably be my guess. However, I believe it is going to be at the rate that we set, because I do know that next week, we are attending a CPC meeting. Normally, they're held today, however, I believe we're going to be having one next week because we are revising the rate that we pay our clerk at that meeting, and that clerk does happen to be a member of the clerical union. So my guess is that each board of committee...
Maintain it.
Yeah, that's, that's my bet, is that we are going to be setting the budget.
Well, if that person, if they, if CPC were on a different night, we could use that same person, because we, they can't do both.
Now, do they have a minimum? Yes, so the clerical...
Not only a minimum wage, but a minimum...
Oh, a minimum hours. Yes, it is twenty hours is the minimum to become an eligible member of the clerical union, and the minimum wage for a clerical union, which is a grade, I want to say a grade four, is twenty-two oh eight per hour.
You know what, the previous one, Lisa was, was early.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, no, that's fine.
She, no, she was also a twenty-two oh eight, even though she was not a member of the union.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that, that would work out then?
Yeah, we, we priced her wage as if she was union, even though she wasn't, because that was just what they put together.
Okay, so something like that would, would work then? Okay.
Yep, it was twenty-one fifty-four in terms...
All right, so we need to write a letter, Jim, you would need to write...
Yeah.
I'll write it with you, or...
Yeah, that, that would be good.
To the who on the selectmen or to the clerical union?
I, I...
Both, I think it would be both.
I'd recommend that we ask the selectmen's permission, just to, because it's like, kind of technically considered internally reposting the position. So rather than us doing it, I think it would...
But are, but are we voting to eliminate that joint position at the same time?
It's not really ours to eliminate, I don't think. Because it's, I mean, I, the short answer is yes, I think, honestly.
Yeah, because if Sewer, if Sewer asks me next week, do we want to hire someone else? I don't think we want to go that route.
No, it was, that was, you know, I, I have nothing but a, you know, appreciation and commendation for the contributions that our outgoing assistant made. The truth is, an eight-hour position, though, is really like, it's a Band-Aid on a broken arm, right? The commission needs...
Good point.
We need a full-time office manager.
Yeah.
And no matter how above and beyond, how committed, how hardworking an eight-hour office assistant is, it's just the hours are insufficient to the task.
Yeah, exactly.
No fault on any individual. So I would say that we need to just, the longer we keep trying to force eight hours to work, I think we need to just accept that the long-term solution really is an office manager.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so we'll request to the selectmen and then, and we have our new town manager, administrator.
He's starting on Monday.
Okay.
His name is Ralph Fertigo.
Hey you.
Hey you. Okay, are we all set for tonight then?
I, I think so, unless there's any other items. I mean, we have public input, nobody's here, correspondence, I don't have any more...
We dealt with everything already.
Other than Mr. Nolet's, the Nolet letter, okay.
Much appreciated.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.